Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Butte-Silver Bow Council of Commissioners Committee, the whole meeting, November 10th, 2015. Could we have roll call, please?
We have 10 present, one presiding, and one absent.
Please let the record show that Commissioner Anderson is absent and will not be here this evening. Would you join us in the prayer and the pledge with Commissioner Anderson?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night, so we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Butte-Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds, so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reported the chair, all I can say is that if anybody thinks this is Wednesday, you're a day off, so, and I'm glad that everyone remembered tonight was our meeting. Tomorrow's Veterans Day, so everybody have a great day off, if you have that. We'll just move right into our presentation. This is Section 1, Communication 15-488. This was rescheduled from October 28th. Karen Burns, Director, Butte-Silver Bow Urban Revitalization Agency, to give a presentation on October 28th, actually this evening, regarding the marketing efforts and information related to the property at 40 East Broadway. This presentation will be given jointly by Northwestern Energy and Butte-Silver Bow. Karen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman Shaw and members of council. I am Karen Burns, Director of Community Development. I will be very brief myself. I'll turn it over to Danny Kaluza, who's representing Northwestern Energy tonight, to give you an update on our, I will say "our" because they have been joint, we've been a partner in this from the beginning, Butte-Silver Bow, but Northwestern Energy has led a marketing effort on their building at 40 East Broadway, and he has a status report on that for you and an update on their new construction of the new building. So, drove by it like four times tonight, just to look at the new sign. It's gorgeous. So, anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you, Karen. Danny?
Thank you, Karen. Madam Chair, Cindy, members of the council, my name is Danny Kaluza. I'm the Director of Support Services for Northwestern Energy. Current address, 40 East Broadway. Our address to be is 11 East Park. We're very proud of our new building. I wanted to just provide an update on the construction and then talk about a few other items. Appreciate the opportunity to do this. So, our construction is approximately 95% complete. We still do have the traffic control around Park Street and Main Street there, and so we're hoping to have that down by November 30th, because I know that's been a concern for folks. We really appreciate the cooperation of our uptown businesses and the Department of Transportation and Butte-Silver Bow, because I know that has been inconvenient, but it's really been important from a safety standpoint to maintain that Jersey rail and other things up there, because we've had a lot of items, we've had a lot of construction materials we've had to bring through there, as well as just to maintain things related to the connections with sewer, water, et cetera. Where we are with the construction is we're working on the punch list items, and the punch list items are kind of the last details on each of these floors. So, we're starting floor five, which is the top floor, through two, those have all been punch listed, so we're working on the final details of those. We actually have the furniture being installed as of two weeks ago. We have 12 or 13 semi-loads of furniture that are coming into the building. J2 Office Products is doing that, and they will have that completed by Thanksgiving. So, again, we'll hopefully be able to bring down, that's one of the reasons, especially on Park Street, we need to maintain some traffic control on that piece. The commissioning of the HVAC system began this week. We're using CTA Architects, along with our construction contractor, DAC, Dick Anderson Hopefully, we're working with Butte-Silver Bow and our architects and our general contractor. We expect to have a certificate of occupancy by December 14th, that's a Monday, and immediately following that, we'll start moving in some departments. We kind of have a slow move in that, that week of December 14th, we'll try to move in probably part of four or five departments. So, that's going to be kind of the groups that need to be there to move everybody into the building. That will be facilities, our BT security, BT applications, and some other groups that will be in the building. And hopefully, we'll be completed with our move-in by the end of January. And we have a tentatively scheduled ribbon-cutting for the building. It's actually scheduled for April, because that coincides with our annual meeting. We'll have our Board of Directors and others. We'll probably have some people in the building before then. I know that Paul's got a community event scheduled in February. We usually have a community reception, so we'll get some people in there before then, but that's kind of going to be the official, open to the public. We'll get all our folks in there. We also, I mean, one of the key points I wanted to make in coming up here is we really appreciate the support and the cooperation of Butte-Silver Bow Government. First of all, you guys approved a development agreement which allowed this project to happen. We got URA funds. We built an uptown Butte because we were able to get New Market Tax Credit, and I think it's been a benefit to all of us as a community and as, you know, members of the community. We're very proud to be in uptown Butte. We look at it as a real, I mean, when you get in the building and you get to look out at the view sheds and you get to see what a great place it is, I think they'll all be really impressed with that. And I think it's a great location, and, you know, that was, that happened because the commissioners approved the development agreement back when we started this way back early, early 2014 now, I think. We've been 18 months at this. All the property transactions have occurred as far as that goes, the direct infrastructure improvements, you know, Dave Schultz and his group, the Planning Commission, the Chief Executive's Office, Public Works, the development, or the Community Development Group with Karen. Everybody's kind of filled that, fulfilled their role. So, that really has been a cooperative effort. So, we've worked together, thank you very much, you know, as a council. We're very thankful to be partners with Butte-Silver Bow in this. The new general office building will provide significant incremental property taxes. We're planning, obviously, to take advantage of the parking facility when that's built, and I know there's a lot of plans going on as far as selecting a contractor, building that, and we're really looking forward to that. We think that is going to be a great benefit to uptown Butte. The other part of the development agreement I wanted to just talk about, and we've got Mike McLeod here, who's, who we hired to do our marketing plan, if you will, for the current 40 East Broadway building, is that we committed, and we have been doing that, and Mike's going to talk about the details, but we committed to use our best efforts to sell or otherwise market the building. We've got, we've had a number of people through the building. We've got some interested parties in the building. What, you know, what comes of that is still up in the air, but with that, I'm just going to introduce Mike, and he can talk about the marketing effort, and I think that's really all I have to say.
Dan?
Mike?
Madam Chair, members of the council, my name's Mike McLeod. I'm the broker-owner, McLeod Realtors, here in Butte. Just a brief history, I was contacted by Pat AC of Northwest Energy who had asked, was asked if I'd have any interest in listing the property at 40 East Broadway. I met with Mr. AC and other representatives shortly thereafter, discussed the listing, and, you know, Pat indicated their desire to not only market, but ultimately sell the property. They brought me up to speed on the development agreement between Northwest Energy and Butte-Silver Bow, but they made it very clear, in no uncertain terms, that their desire was not just to make their best effort to market it, but ultimately get the property sold, if at all possible, prior to them vacating the building. Before they hired me, they asked me to prepare a marketing plan for 40 East Broadway, which was to include local, regional, and national exposure. So, I formulated a marketing plan, presented to them, and then I was hired to sell the property shortly after. Just a brief summary of what we've done to facilitate those marketing efforts, just on a local level, you know, we've advertised in print and local radio. We've placed the property in the Butte Board of Realtors Multiple List System, which allows for every realtor, you know, in our community to have access to showing the property, put it on our personal website. So, we did, for a business, that website, but so, we did all the things that we would normally do. Beyond that, on a regional and a nationwide, nationwide level, we've done two things. One was we put it on a, placed it on an internet site called LoopNet.com, which is arguably the most viewed commercial website available. But probably the most important thing we did, we placed it on the CCIM site, and CCIM stands for Certified Commercial Investment Member, which I have a designation in. It allows me some direct marketing opportunities that you just don't get unless you're part of that organization, but it's direct to commercial real estate brokers throughout the whole country. In addition to that, what I asked Northwestern to do, which was a little bit different, was I asked them to employ the services of a gentleman named Mr. Bill Watts, to complete a market analysis on the building, in an effort really to identify the likely highest and best use. What I thought this would do for our efforts was it would kind of ramp up potential buyers. We could have this for them, that it would show that, you know, it's just not a commercial property, there's other uses with the building, or potential uses. I believe Northwestern, I think they spent about 15,000 of their own money on that. I know it's available to potential buyers. If it comes to it, that Butte-Silver Bow ends up with a property, I know they're going to make that available to them to use in whatever marketing efforts you might have. Just a quick update, to date, we've had about, I would say, eight to 10 interested parties. Last week, we actually, we had two showings. Haven't had any formal offers, but I will tell you, on the scope of a property like this, I've been encouraged with a number of people that'll come through and not just tire kickers. I think there's some people with some real, particularly last week, we had some folks that really seemed to have a genuine interest. They've asked for the, you know, the drawings, they've asked for a lot of information, which tells me they've got a level of interest. Where it goes, who knows, but I have been encouraged with it. So, in summary, I just want to let you know that, you know, our objective, not just up until now, but until and if Northwest vacates the property, is to not just market it, but, you know, ultimately try to bring you or them a buyer prior to that happening. So, we'll keep making our best efforts to do that.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions from council members? Anyone? Yeah, so, Mike, how long, well, I guess this is either for you or Dan. You mentioned, Dan mentioned that April was sort of like the drop dead date for maybe a ribbon-cutting and the annual meeting coinciding with that. So, when would we actually take ownership? I mean, what are we looking at?
I think that's a question for Madam Chair, for Dan.
For Dan. Okay, thank you. Dan?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I suspect the timing will be a little bit variable, but we are planning to be completely moved in by the end of January. We're trying to get all of our departments to get the equipment, files, everything that they need out, probably by the end of February, and if there was a property transfer, it would probably occur sometime after March 30th. I mean, we don't have a specific date at this point in time. We would work mutually with Butte-Silver Bow on that.
At that point in time, would that sever the responsibility that Northwestern Energy would have in doing any of the marketing or follow-up?
Well, I guess I would say this, our intentions are to continue to help the community and help Butte-Silver Bow market that. In other words, what I mean by that is, we're happy to show it. My facilities manager, John Habiger, is an expert on the building, and we would continue to support whatever marketing efforts Butte-Silver Bow had, or development efforts for that matter, after a transfer occurred.
Okay. And Eileen, this is a question for you, but a transfer would actually mean a transfer of property, which would be an official resolution indeed of some sort, I'm assuming. Okay. I'm taking your nod as a yes. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Cindy Perdudon?
Dan, when you say you're happy to show the property beyond the transfer, would that include Northwestern happy to include costs involved in that, or would that be incur cost to Butte-Silver Bow?
Dan?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Dolan, Perdudon, there's no cost in showing the building, so I'm not really sure what your question is.
Clarification.
The person showing it, their time and effort, that, incurring that cost?
Yeah, we certainly would not require Butte-Silver Bow to re, versus for any of the costs to provide assistance to showing the building, or explaining the building, or providing drawings, or other things, which they're generally interested in. We've provided, as Mike said, we've provided floor plans, mechanical drawings, so that's information we'd be happy to support Butte-Silver Bow in their marketing efforts, if we get to that point. You know, our goal, as Mike said, is to get the building sold before then.
And Dan, I remember you shared this, maybe you could say it on the record here, that that best use analysis, could you tell us what the final results of that was, considered the best use?
You know, I'm not in a, I might not be the best one to respond to that. Maybe I'll let Mike respond to that, if that's okay. Chairman Shaw?
You bet.
Madam Chair, members of the council, it was a lengthy analysis, and I know it's available for anybody to review, it was quite interesting. The final, his final determination was that, you know, more than likely a mixed use, which is easy to say when I say that, you know, a mixture of commercial, retail, multifamily, but really, his emphasis was multifamily, was what he thought the market would absorb. When he did the market analysis, it wasn't just, some folks think of a market analysis as, you know, a value on the building, some people think about it just the building. His market analysis was more about the entire community and how this building played into it, and, you know, if offered to the market, would be the most likely suitor for it, and he thought it would be somebody with an emphasis on multifamily. It could be something else, but, you know, it'd be a helpful tool for somebody that was going to evaluate a lot of market information that was really spot-on, that would be provided to a potential buyer.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Palmer?
One more question, I guess this is for you, Mike, maybe. When you're trying to market this building, do you have a set asking price, or is it looking for proposals?
Mike?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Palmer, we priced the building at $750,000, so we did have a set price, and I wish I could tell you that there was, we did a, you know, in tune analysis exactly, but we really had to come up with a number, and we felt that was the most, would make it the most marketable.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Ms., Madam Chair. Is that the appraised value, and does that correlate with the assessor's office value of the building?
Mike?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Fisher, there wasn't an appraisal done that I'm aware of on the building, and whatever the assessor's, that thing, I would, Dan may be able to speak to this, I would think it's well in excess, but I'm not sure. I honestly, we wouldn't, typically, when we price a building, we wouldn't look at what the assessor would come up with. It may coincide, but that wouldn't typically be what we would come up with.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it, and we're looking forward to that building. It's just a beautiful building, and I love the new sign, so, thanks, everybody, and we'll look forward to the next step here. Hopefully, you guys can sell the building. I don't know, Karen, is there anything else you want to add as far as what URA or any community development might have a part in, in marketing the building, or as a last?
Yeah.
As our part of it, I guess?
Yeah, Chairman Shaw, members of the council commissioners, I really don't have a lot to add. I mean, I could talk at length about what I can visualize as our next steps forward, but as we've focused on tonight, you know, we're focused on that they're going to be able to sell the building or transfer ownership prior to Butte-Silver Bow taking ownership. But if we do take ownership, it will still be a joint effort in marketing the structure. We have very good information based on the market analysis that they've conducted and, you know, other information that we've gathered, that, you know, I believe we can put together a really great package moving forward, and I'm not afraid of it at all. I think we would be able to get something going rather quickly. So, we're up for the challenge of getting it out there, but it's a great building, it's in great shape, it's extremely marketable, and so we're looking forward to it, if it happens.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, that concludes the presentation. Moving along to the next item on our agenda is, at this point, we have our public comment period on any items that are on tonight's agenda. Are there any public comments? I don't see any, all right, seeing none, we'll move on to Section 2, Communication Number 15-356. Kenneth and Michelle Palmer, 936 Zerelda Street, Butte, Montana, requesting council's authorization to purchase county-owned property under the adjacent landowner policy. We are still waiting, Fredori is working on meeting to visit with the Palmers at the property, along with some of our Butte-Silver Bow county employees, including our Planning Department, and we have spoken to the Palmers, and they are willing to wait, and we are negotiating an arrangement so that we can properly work on getting the survey done and possibly, and hopefully having them get the property. So, we'll just hold that in advance for now. Any questions? Section 3, Communication 15-415. Robert E. Makaroski, Director, Butte-Silver Bow Land Office, requesting council's authorization for the sale of county-owned property under the adjacent landowner policy, and for council, ask the county attorney to prepare the resolution indeed. This is the Klobuchar request, and let me see here. I know that we are waiting, Lori Casey did send a letter to the Klobuchars about what the next step might be. They were not agreeing with the purchase price. We gave them an option to either take the price that we offered, or an approved Montana Department of Revenue evaluation, and we're waiting for their response on that. Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I visited with the Klobuchars probably a week ago, and they're going to move in a different direction. They're still interested in the property, but I believe they're going to make an offer to buy one lot only. I don't know if that's the way it'll work, but that's the, that's what they're talking right now, so.
Okay.
So, I'll be in touch with them, and then in touch with our friends on the board and go on on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. We'll continue to hold that in advance for future developments. Section 4, Communication 15-470. Dave Palmer, Butte-Silver Bow Commissioner, District 12, requesting a crosswalk installed on Center Street. Speed Zone signs to be installed on Center Street. A tree on the corner of Buffalo and Main will be trimmed, and review of the alarm at the fire station. Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did discuss this with Dave and Nick from the Public Works Department. They have agreed to go up to the next neighborhood meeting up in Centerville and discuss it with the people, and then they'll report back after that. So, this time, I'm just asking to hold it in advance.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Section 5, Communication 15-488. Karen Burns, Director, Butte-Silver Bow Urban Revitalization Agency, to give a presentation on October 28th, 2015, regarding the marketing efforts and information related to the property at 40 East Broadway. This presentation will be given jointly by Northwestern and Butte-Silver Bow. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Being that we held that presentation tonight, I'll make a motion that we place Communication 15-488 on file.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication 15-488 on file. Is there anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Section 6, Communication Number 15-490. Karen Burns, Director, Butte-Silver Bow Community Development Department, requesting council's recommendation to approve Council Communication 15-460, request from Blaine Brown to purchase city-county property under the adjacent landowner policy. This one, the surveyor is working on it. Dory had spoken to Mr. Blaine, and he is having a survey done prior to moving this along to our county attorney's office, so we will continue to hold that in advance. Section 7, Communication 15-496. Julia Crane, Special Projects Manager, Planning Department, requesting council's authorization for the chief executive to sign a location and property release with 0.0 Productions, Inc. Mr. Malloy, would you care to speak on this and on behalf of Julia?
Yes, I would.
Thank you, and I think there were just a couple of questions on some details in the release itself.
Madam Chairman, members of the council, 0.0 Productions contacted Julia Crane, third week of October, requesting a tour of the Berkeley Pit for taking photographs. So, on October 20th, I took their photographers up there, and for about 15, 20 minutes, they had their cameras out and took all kinds of photographs, and then they threw their cameras back in the truck and left. After that was over, they, their 0.0 Productions provided a property release agreement, basically asking permission to use permanently the photographs that they took. So, Julia forwarded that to the council, requesting permission for Matt Vincent to sign the release. Generally, we take people up there all year long, every day, and it's not an unusual thing for people to take photographs, so we don't require a release, a property release for 0.0 to copyright, or publish, or use whatever photographs they took. I think it's for their own attorneys and their own use that they require a release, if it's necessary. So, that's as much as I know about the release itself.
And I did talk to Julie on Friday, and I believe she told me that the 0, what's it called again? Thank you. 0.0 Productions, they had to have the release in order to use the material, and that was the key. It had really nothing to do with liability or anything like that. It was simply something they needed in their file so that they could use the material. That was my understanding.
That's my understanding, too.
Okay. Are any questions for Tom? Commissioner Perdudon?
Thank you, Tom. The reason I held this for more questions was only because of the date, and it was November, and the date on the contract had October 20th, so I just wanted a clarification on the date, and it was, seemed like it was just backdated, so thank you so much for the clarification.
Yeah, the photographs were taken on October 20th, and then they provided the release, which we submitted to council.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion? Commissioner Perdudon, excuse me, Commissioner Palmer?
Just one other question, Madam Chair. Tom, do you have any idea what they're going to use these pictures for?
Just as far as I know, is the information that's been provided to me, that I've seen the show on CNN, and I assume it's going to be broadcast as one of their regular, what I understand of the show is that it's focusing on the entire state of Montana, and they started off in Mile City, went through Billings and Red Lodge, and worked their way westerly until they got to Butte, so we have a small portion of a larger show.
Any other questions? Commissioner Perdudon, would you care to make a motion?
Thank you. I would make a motion then to concur and place on file.
Second.
What, what are we, concurring and placing on file?
I'm sorry. Communication Number 15-496, to concur and place on file.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second to concur with Communication 15-496 and place it on file. Is there anything further on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right, thank you. Section 8, Communication 15-497. Lori Casey, Assistant Planning Director, Butte-Silver Bow Planning Board, requesting council's approval for zone change application number 173, and to ask the county attorney to prepare an ordinance for adoption. We are in the midst of waiting on the county attorney's office to draft that amendment, I do believe, the ordinance. So, we will continue to hold that for that new language to come before us. Section 9, Communication 15-498. Jeffrey L. Miller, Director, Butte-Silver Bow Fire Services, requesting council's authorization to hold a public hearing on November 18th, 2015, regarding the proposed sole-source purchase of 20 self-contained breathing apparatus for the Butte-Silver Bow Fire Department. We will hold that in advance until the public hearing on November 18th. Section 10, Communication 15-499. Jeffrey L. Miller, Director, Butte-Silver Bow Fire Services, requesting council's authorization to hold a bid opening on November 18th, 2015, regarding the 2016 1500 GPM pumper tender for the Big Butte Volunteer Fire Department. We will hold that in advance until the time that that bid opening occurs. So, we're at a point in our agenda for any public comment and any public matter not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, anything further? Seeing none, anything further? Commissioner Henderson?
Madam Chair, at this time, I'd like to express my sincere thank you to all the veterans and families in their service in the military, keeping us safe.
Thank you, Dennis. This morning, I had the, or this afternoon, I had the pleasure, and I will have tomorrow morning, I went to Hillcrest School. Tomorrow, I'll be going along, to Margaret Leary, and they have a flag celebration there, and it's pretty moving, the veterans talking about the flag, the Pledge of Allegiance, and these little kids, it's pretty amazing that they know how to sing the National Anthem. That is pretty cool, so.
I think you made a whole interesting.
Yes. Chief Executive.
Madam Chair, just in case folks were planning on attending tomorrow's Veterans Day service at Stodden Park at 10 o'clock, it's been moved to the annex of the Civic Center due to the weather, so.
Okay.
10 o'clock tomorrow at the Civic Center Annex.
Okay. See if we can get our paper to upgrade that for us. Anything else to come before us tonight?
No.
All righty. Commissioner Morgan?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion is second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.